All the homeowners received recommendations about how to improve energy efficiency in their homes. Other projects include the Feature Road School Energy Saving Features that accorded the renovation project I mentioned. There are 970 stovetop panels now installed on the roof of Feature Road's school. We have new indoor walls which improve insulation and new heating and air conditioning systems. We also have kilowatt meters available at the library. If you want to check how your appliances are doing, you can take these out of the library and bring them home. There are additional environmental initiatives that I want to mention to you this evening. Our Conservation Commission is updating our open space plan. Our community gardens are benefiting from the work of our ADHOC committee on best organic practices. Adam Parsons, the Parks Director, has taken the first steps in implementing the recommendations of that committee. He has planted more than 20 native plants that support butterfly and bee habitats. They're in the meadow as you approach the community gardens. Guards on the right, the meadow is on the left. And you'll see them there. It's very beautiful and we should be seeing more bees and butterflies this coming summer. We've also been a signatory to the West River Watershed Compact. This is a multi-town contact that helps to promote the health and beauty of the West River. This will allow fish to spawn upstream. It will also help with flooding in the Amity district. And it was also instrumental in having the Pond Lee Dam removal, which is also very important to the West River health. And just today, the town added its second electric vehicle charging station. We have one over near the Public Works Garage and one now near the library. Those also were made possible by state grants and not by town funds. It's very important as we look at our infrastructure and improvements that we look for every opportunity to collaborate, we seek grants and funding, and work with other towns and other departments. This year, we wrapped up the finite cable work on the Mary Ann Bridge replacement. That project was done in conjunction with the state and federal governments. We installed the Lucy Street sidewalks that were funded with state funds through the STEEP grant program. And also, we were instrumental in enabling the JCC to access low-interest financing for its solar array through the SEEP program, which we had adopted in the Towne Woodbridge. So we've been very busy, as you can see, with a great emphasis on spreading our tax base and energy efficiency and green energy. Now, looking ahead to the next fiscal year, of course, most of the projects I've mentioned are continuing. They don't just end on June 30th, so we will be continuing with those initiatives. But in addition, I'd like to mention a few others. We have applied for a STEEP grant to renovate or replace our animal shelter, which is in dire need of upgrading. Here again, we are working in collaboration with other towns, which makes it much more likely that we will receive the grant, so we're optimistic about that. We've been working on the installation of a solar array at the cap landfill. And as we were working on this, we came to a roadblock because the state had placed a cap on the availability of credits for municipal landfills. And the Towne Woodbridge took a leadership role with a dozen other towns. We hosted a meeting here to get everyone united and lobbying for the bill and working with our state delegation. And I'm pleased to tell you the cap was lifted and that impediment has been removed from the project, so we're optimistic that it is going in. And finally, I mentioned already the microgrid fuel cell, which is now underway and we hope will be completed this year. We have many challenges and opportunities on the horizon. I think some things are both, some things may be more of one than the other. We're looking at our first responder communication system. We want to make sure our police and fire departments upgraded and up-to-date equipment that they need and will be extending that to the Public Works as well. The Amity enrollment shift is something that Tony will speak a little bit more about. You'll see that one of the major drivers of our budget increase this year is because of our increased proportionate share of students at Amity. And that's something we want to look at into the future to see if we can smooth out the highs and lows in that. We are expecting announcements about new key personnel in town. We will be having a new police chief and a new superintendent at Feature Road School. These are two very important positions in our town and we have exciting new opportunities with people bringing new ideas to us. We're also doing a technology review to make sure that our IT townwide is as efficient, both technologically and financially, as it can be. Towntend of planning is an ongoing process. It's been going on for four billion years and we will certainly continue with that. Regulism and state funding is something else that we monitor very closely. As you probably all know, the state faces a very serious budget deficit this year. It threatens various items in our budget, but because of our finance directors' very careful and conservative budgeting, it has not had a huge impact on us, and Tony will tell you more about that. But it's something that we really have to watch. I don't think we can count on the level of state funding we've had in the past. So we also look at opportunities for regulism and where we can cooperate for other towns to save money and access grants. And finally, we have the future of the Country Public Woodbridge, and I'd like to just say a few words about that. Clearly, the Country Public Woodbridge is the most controversial issue facing our town. We've had many, many conversations and meetings about the property's future. As we continue the conversations, I hope we can all keep perspective and appreciate how fortunate we are that the future of a country club is our most pressing issue. And I say that not to suggest that it isn't important, but rather that we should be able to engage in respectful conversations to find the solution that best fits the competing needs and desires of town residents. And certainly, there are many. I just want to say a little bit about the process we've been through and where we are, so you have that in mind as the days and weeks go on. In the summer of 2013, we saw the impact of bad weather and other factors that resulted in significant budget deficits at the Country Public Woodbridge. The town had lost hundreds of thousands of dollars on golf operations. That was the first Country Public Woodbridge-related problem that I tackled when I became First Selectman. I renegotiated the contract with Billy Kasper Golf, so that Billy Kasper and not the town bore the risk of golf operations losses. In addition, under the new agreement, the town shares gross golf revenues when they exceed a certain dollar amount. After stopping the significant losses, we turned our attention to longer-term plans for the property. We held many community conversations with the public to hear your concerns and desires. We had consultants study the property and make recommendations. And we issued an RFP to learn what the private sector would propose for the property. After that time, I actually agreed with a leader of the town Republican Party that we should take a break and regroup and really try to get a handle on the facts and history of the country club. We wanted to look at the history and the finances. The Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance in joint meetings did that. Tony Genesiz prepared detailed information for us that we reviewed. We also held public meetings for nearly every board and commission so that they could learn what the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen learned. These were public meetings. Many of you were there as well. And we wanted to see if they identified any information gaps that we would be filling in, and we're working on that too. What's coming up next is that the public will hear all of these facts and the Board of Selectmen will decide if there is a proposal that the board recommends for public consideration. If so, the public will vote on that recommendation. I cannot remind you enough, because people forget this or don't know it, that there cannot be a sale of town land without a vote by town resident. So there is no decision that can be made that involves any sale of any of that property without your vote. While we're on the country club issue, some residents... This is relevant to our budget discussion tonight, so I hope I can set the record straight now and if you have more questions, and if Tony or you are matter, I will answer them. Some residents have expressed concerns that the Country Club of Woodbridge pool and golf operations are not funded in this budget and therefore cannot and will not continue next year. Like everything else connected with the Country Club of Woodbridge, misinformation and confusion abound. So I want to just take this opportunity to address the rumors. First, I will clarify that pool and golf are funded through the end of calendar year 2016. There is not an appropriation beyond that time, but not because a decision has been made to discontinue either of those activities. As we discussed at the last Board of Selective meeting, the funding or lack thereof in this budget does not mean the operations can't continue. There are many open questions that need to be decided about what future activities will take place and what level of funding they will require. I will mention to you that the proponents of both operations, the very strong proponents of the fight range, have made the case that they will rate even and not need funding. But even if we decide to go ahead and that's not the case, the town can always cover a shortfall, both in the fiscal year 17 budget, we have various ways to do that, or in the fiscal year 18 budget. And when Tony makes his presentation and there are no questions you have, he can explain more details about it. And finally, just a couple words about our budget process. We did go over that in more detail at the preliminary budget hearing, and I won't go through all the steps. But it's very important again to remember that our budget process, our budget development process in this small town is almost all year long. The first part of the process takes place from September to December. We have a lot of process. Where volunteer board and commission members work with department staff to prepare initial department budget requests and present them to the town. Our budget development benefits from a diverse group of employees and commission members with a wide array of points of view who work together on budget proposals. It goes through various steps and the budget process culminates tonight at our traditional historic annual town meeting. Tony Genesiz, who is our finance director and administrative officer, is now going to update you on the proposed budget for the 2016 fiscal year. But before he does, I want to express to Tony once again the appreciation of the Towne Woodbridge for Tony's outstanding award-winning work on Alvin Ham.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. I wanted to just review a few highlights of the budget this evening. As stated at the budget hearing, there were a few items that presented some challenges to the town at the beginning of this budget process. So I just wanted to restate some of those for you. The first was state revenue, and it was very uncertain as to what we received in state revenue and when we would find out about that. So that always presents a challenge to us. As you know, the state budget was adopted this past weekend and there was virtually no change to the town in terms of total dollars. So that was good news. The state did however increase the mill rate cap on motor vehicles from 32 to 37, so we'll get into that in a little bit. The second issue was spending on education. That was also to be a challenge this year. The funding from Amity alone has increased 5.8% this year, or about $784,000 for next year. In fact, of the close to $1.3 million in additional expenditures, about 82% of that, or a little over $1 million, to lead to education budget increases. I just wanted to frame that, that the education spending this year proved to be a challenge. Tied into that among none of those figures, debt service also increased this past year, and $121,000. And the significance of this is that this is the first year that the school... The renovations of the school debt service hit the budget for 2017, so that actually is about $630,000. But because of some careful planning, the net impact was minor in comparison because of the prior project that had been paid off last year. So we were able to match the two projects together to minimize tax impact to the town. A fourth item is labor negotiations. The town is currently in negotiations with Post Municipal Union that has yet to be concluded. I can say that we did hear a lot of concerns raised at the budget hearing last month. We appreciate those concerns and are working hard to address them. So we do appreciate your input on that. Finally, the Country Public Woodbridge does contain $600,000 in funding. And of that, $400,000 is for debt service. So the remainder would be for the pool and for golf operations as ill indicated through calendar year 2016. So should the town wish to continue with those operations and funding would be required for the first six months of 2017, as that should the budget is for, then contingency funding or some other funding source could apply here. So if, for instance, the pool has revenues associated with it, some of the revenues can also be used to fund the pool operations. There's a number of ways to do that, so I just wanted to be clear about that. After the budget hearing, the board of commissioners recommended two changes to the budget. The first was a contingency, which, based on the latest available information that the board had at the time, including the written information about state grants and other things, the contingency was reduced by $75,000. So that's the first item. It still leaves funding for any of the preceding expenditures or any possible labor or country club costs, as we discussed. The second is the capital budget. This was reduced by $110,000. And this was funding that was eliminated for air packs for the fire department for next year. In actual fact, because of the Board of Finance had funds remaining in this year's contingency, they chose to fund those air packs because in the current year, and therefore eliminate the funding in fiscal year 17. So those are the two changes. But that results in the district flyer that we have that was mailed is a 2.92% expenditure increase. And you can see it on the screen. There are budget non-tax revenues totaling $3.2 million, which gives a full tax levying of $44,928.27, which is about 2.39% increase over this year. Since the April budget meeting and since the Board of Finance had met on the budget, there are a few additional items that came up, which I wanted to just bring to your attention. The first is that the Woodbridge School District has identified an additional $60,000 in reductions in their FY17 operating budget. So that would be one recommended or change to the budget you have in front of you. The second is the state revenue funds. I just wanted to do a little more detail on that. The state basically made three major changes to our budget. The first is they fully funded our education cost-sharing grant, which increased $32,000 over the preliminary budget, so that was good news. Because the motor vehicle mill rate cap was increased to 37 from 32, the state eliminated the motor vehicle tax cap grant, which was $276,000. But luckily, the state added a new revenue line called a revenue sharing account, which is basically the revenue sharing of sales tax that's passed out of the town. And that's a $247,000 addition. So if you net up all the changes, it comes to about $312,000. So that's good news for us. And the motor vehicle cap, as I indicated, is now 37. So with a mill rate of 37, then the real estate personal property mill rate would be 38.54 of those changes I just mentioned. And there's the expenditure amounts there. So with those changes, the budget is $47,439.9, which is 2.79%. The budget offset remained the same, $3.2 million. Given the full taxes, $44,168.55, which is 2.25% increase over the current year. And there's the two mill rates that would be complied to various tax bills. And the last layout, this is an interesting pie chart, which sort of illustrates where increases are, what sections of the budget increases are coming from. And you can see that, as indicated earlier, the Woodbridge Board of Education is a 2.03% increase. The Amity Board of Education is 5.80, and the remaining towns' apartments is 1.21. So those are sort of the three major count groups that we like to illustrate every year as we look through this process. So thank you very much for your time.
Since we don't have 250 required people, no advocate can be taken to increase, decrease, or eliminate any item in the budget has been approved. But as we've shown the path in the practice of the town, permit people to come up and make comments on any item in the budget. And if you would like to address any of those items, please step forward to the microphone. Identify yourself, you name your address, and feel free to comment on any budget item or question you have.
I think it's our wine state with the 106 in Sony Road. I have just... I'm not sure if this is coming through. Our state again, our wine state with the 106 in Sony Road. I have just really one question, and it's really on the Country Club of Woodbridge and the pool. I just don't understand the rationale to not budgeting anything for six months instead of contingency funds will be addressed if we do continually. As 200... My math says it's a difference of some $253,000. If I just use the projections of this year versus established with budget, it just keeps me constant. I have a lot of money thinking of contingencies. It just doesn't make true sense. So I'm gonna quote, I'm gonna take it from some other fund, that there is a contingency. That's like, honey, it just doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
The second, perhaps helpful, a few comments. The first is that there was some hope that there would possibly be some reductions in the amounts that we pay, if at all, due to some favorable results that was talked about frequently. Second of all, six months of the contract, if you use the current contract, it'd be less than $100,000 because of the way that it's structured. So it wouldn't actually be quite that much. So the thought was because there's no contract in place to put an amount in the budget that's easily identifiable, not being a smart idea.
Good evening. Nancy on Moss Flat, 16 North Ricebrook. I just want to take a moment to pause and say thank you for a difficult budget to come upon. It seems like there are many hidden variables that surfaced since the budget hearing, and that's always difficult to factor in. So I just wanted to applaud the Board of Selectmen, the Director of Finance, for really hard work that went into this clearly. Given the significant increases in the school board of education at Amity and both the feature, I'm a beneficiary, as I have two young children are feature, and really appreciate those budget increases, but understand that that also burdened the town, but doesn't all have children and in the schools. But I do want to say that I see the noticeable differences that the Economic Commission and Board of Selectmen and Allen Scoutra have made in this town. I guess in simple terms, I get a lot of town envy from other votes, from other towns and neighborhoods. That's always a good thing. That's right to hand, Tony. But the intent, Tony, is that we have a lot more commerce. And I think the right efforts have been made to really move toward increasing, referring the tax burden on residents, to really increase a little bit more the commercial. I think we as town residents, it's really unfortunate. I mean, a good sign that people are working collectively is that people stay home because they trust that the process is working. But also, I do want to encourage the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to consider, after the calendar year is complete, a potential contingency for the Woodbridge Club. And I guess, I think about it a couple of ways. I think it's a generational change that's happening in the town. We're seeing a lot more diversity as a Chinese-American. I see a lot more international residents moving in from China and greater China. I think there's a lot more interest. I think the generation that I'm in have been sort of dual income, dual working, so we haven't had the pleasure of enjoying some of those qualities of recreational activities that the golf and the pool represent. But do I hope that our children have that pleasure and that opportunity? I do. So I would take a little pause on the Woodbridge Club and really consider seriously that there might be a generational change, just as you've done such a good job at really bridging that social media trend in amazingly spectacular speeds. I've seen this town go from completely not in social media, completely active, and so I'm very thrilled by that. But also, I just suggest that we consider the generational change that's happening and potentially the interest in the pool and the club. Because I don't think it's been marketed well enough and we haven't had the chance to read, to look up and surface to say, wow, that is something exciting. But I do applaud the Board of Selectmen and the Director of Finance in particular, and first the Board of Selectmen down south, with an amazing job that you've been doing in this town and all of you have done. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yen Tzu Koh. Send me to the middle room. What I'd like to talk about here, again, are the young women. Before this, I'd say maybe one approach is a house in addition to look at the house itself, help consider about the education, neighborhood, environment, housing, property, service, and advocate for the town. So you know, this is a lot of part of the value in addition to the house. It is... I know the board already have this magnitude of value in mind, when you're in the budget. But as a resident, we still hope more on the value. Each department have the budget, can improve the value. Next, and the department, they're only development or they are all interested. I'm like the house this year, I think it's immediate, like once in a couple years, because it's difficult for a person, because each house to evaluate the value of the house. But this part of the value is automatically changing each year because the budget is changing. So actually, this value is automatically changing because you can see each year, each year you receive the report for the town about the value. Actually, it's decreased, but the mirror is increased. Mirror, I think maybe just for convenient technicality, has in response to the change of the budget. But high mirror rate is possible to the value. As you know, we can look up, go home, look up the value. The value actually decreased in the past years, but the mirror rate increased 30%. So if go this way, maybe our time goes to the high mirror rate, no value town, like some city, Hartford, whatever. So I really request the board to reconsider about this issue, about the mirror hat, mirror mirror rate hat. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Blue Shaper, 48 Old Park Road. I also wanted to speak in favor of the Woodbridge Country Club, Country Club of Woodbridge. One of the other speakers mentioned that we're not doing enough to advertise it and to push membership. I'm more concerned that what the board is doing now is going to accomplish the opposite. Now, I realize that the First Selectwoman stated that funding, and Mr. Genesiz mentioned that funding could be found at a later time. But in any event, by not having it funded right now, we're sending a message out. That message may be wrong, but perceptions can be miswrong. And people are perceiving it's a death watch. Is it gonna help membership there? No, not at all. We've gotta do more to that. I'm also concerned for the First Selectwoman's remarks that we did here. Well, she mentioned correctly that we don't really have a town center in Woodbridge. We don't. She mentioned a number of things, places, and things that we do to accomplish that. We talked about the farmer's market and other things, hikes. But where was the Woodbridge, where was the Country Club of Woodbridge? Why wasn't that mentioned? Why wasn't that mentioned? That's where many of us gather, many of us see our neighbors there. So, I implore you, please, fund the Country Club of Woodbridge.
Spencer Lauer, thirty-nine Westwood Road. Spencer Lauer. Anyway, I'm in favor of the, uh, keeping the Country Club of Woodbridge as a working golf course. Until we do have a vote and the residents vote to sell the property, which I think is a, uh, not likely to happen, but that's my assessment. Until that happens, I, I think the, uh, the Board of Selectmen should negotiate, uh, keep good faith with the board to, uh, fund it for next year.
Amy Morello, one eighty-four Witten Road. Um, could you actually go back to the slide about the country club and the process, please? Just because I have a question, I'd like to be sure everybody understands what the question is, and is specific to the wording that's up there. So, if you look at this, what, that was it? Thank you. Um, you have under item three, if the Board of Selectmen, presumably the Board of Selectmen demands, public hearings projected in the third quarter of two thousand and sixteen. My first question is, um, with respect to the, Brian Richard, is part of public hearings as opposed to informational public input meetings where people might provide input? Uh, I'm wondering why the term, which is morally holistic, public hearings is used, whether something is, something, that has significance or not? Or is this still a listening hearing for the Board of Selectmen?
This refers to public hearings if there is a decision by the Board of Selectmen to actually make a recommendation. As I said in my comments, the next item for us to do is to have the public hear the facts. To follow up, I've said this many times on the Boarding Commission meetings, where we looked at the history and the facts and had an opportunity for discussion and questions. Um, this, not everything is on the slides, as you can see, they're not all the same, but there will be public hearings if the Board of Selectmen votes to make a recommendation to send something to the town.
So, um, the third quarter, um, is what, July first through September thirtieth, if I understand it, because you're using a calendar year in this instance as opposed to a fiscal year? So, is that July one through September thirtieth? Yes, okay, so, um, so, I'm just trying to understand, Eleanor, not, uh, then the ideas, you would potentially still have a public informational meeting from, and, and when would that be placed? This is May sixteenth. There's six weeks left till the third quarter begins. Do you have anything in mind? There are six weeks left.
Until the third quarter begins, and then within that, this is not gonna be absolutely precise, I mean, I think you can see that there is not that deadline, but the goal is to have continued conversations, we've, of which we've had many. We will continue to do that, there's been ample opportunity for the Boards and Commissions to look at it, and of course, we'll, we'll be discussing this perhaps for years to come, but I hope so.
Okay, well, I would just encourage you then, and consider when you're gonna have these informal informational meetings for the public, to try to have them in a period when school is in session, as opposed to when school is out, because traditionally the town has backed off, the public meetings, et cetera, um, in the summer months, because we just don't get as good a turnout. So, I hope that you will take that into consideration as you, um, contemplate your schedule. Thank you very much.
Encourage you to, you know, the people come out and talk in support of the Country Club of Woodbridge. I agree, uh, in my heart, I was hoping there would be enough people here, um, to vote on that, but unfortunately, there were not. But I would like to take this opportunity to speak. Um, I'd like to say that, taking into consideration your, your, um, your statement about negotiating a contract, I would just like to say that, um, if there's a contract negotiated and there's a golf operation, that would set the stage for the failure of the property, closing the pool, and the, um, the development of the country club. I urge you not only to negotiate a contract, but you're doing, but look at the entire, uh, Country Club complex, and the, and more importantly, look at the element of the room, which is the clubhouse. Now, the clubhouse is deteriorated, and there needs to be money spent to keep it from deteriorating. The other choice is to let it deteriorate, at which point you'll have to standard even more money to monitor. So, it's, it's not going to go away, it has to be addressed, as far as I can tell, with the meetings, it really hasn't been, um, significantly addressed. The, the other thing that I would, uh, suggest is some money be put into that, made it useful to the town and marketed so that it would be actually profitable. And I believe that it can be. So, I'd just like to, I mean, that, say, um, I have something else to say, but I can't now, so.
I just have a question, I was looking at the budget here, it's on that. Uh, can you transfer the general fund on your proposed budget for the apartment request was two million, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars? You have to do the Board of Selectmen's proposed budget, one million five, excuse me, but then, Board of Finance finally got it done, eight hundred and four thousand. I was a minus twelve percent, I'm just wondering why the such big request on the general fund? Because it's cut down by a whole thousand, a million dollars. I'm just wondering where that money that was requested, what's that, could be used?
So, the transfer from general fund to the transfer, or capital budget, so, those are capital projects that are sometimes multi-year projects. Because the general fund is on an annual basis, you transfer out of the funds, out of the general fund into a capital fund to pay for capital projects. There were a number of capital projects that were requested that were not approved, including, uh, some road work was reduced, some vehicles were eliminated, um, computers, uh, were, were eliminated. There's a list of capital items that the Boards of Selectmen and Finance felt were not necessary at this time.
I'm happy, yes, I could say that none of that money that was requested would be going into the Country Club or into the club that.
No, the, the reduction of the employee was, um, at the wrong set of taxes.
Okay, thanks. Right.
Okay, believe it or not, I'll be the shortest speaker tonight. Actually, you had a big bronze. Hot off the press, okay? For those of you that were not paying attention, okay? Saw the sign outside, okay? New pool rates, okay? And Lou Schaper, my new best friend, okay? Because he's right, it is very difficult, and it is a challenge, and I understand it now, so, as much as I agree, I understand the issue. Now, if you didn't renegotiate the contract, we wouldn't even be having this discussion right now, because it would've been closed a long time ago. That renegotiation has actually moved us to the place of actually having the discussion of saving the Country Club at this point. But, so, the new pool rates, anyone know what a single rate is?
Three hundred dollars.
No! Three hundred! Couple, how much is a couple membership? Five hundred dollars? Sign up! Families, how much? Seven hundred dollars! Joyce, thank you. Eleanor, when you decided you were thinking about making the rates more competitive, that led us to where we are, and we moved in a week, okay? And we put it together. And yesterday, just, I just got this right, as I walked in the room, our smiling pool director came by, we now have sixty-seven people signed up, an all-time record, this time of the year. Yesterday alone, and it's changed since then, you all think it's forty-six, forty-eight people signed up yesterday. Forty-eight people, and all those people, forty-two of them are, forty-eight, forty-two of them are brand-new members. They're getting the message, okay? Adrienne said, hey, I'm gonna save the Country Club. She signed up. Dave Oliver, I'm gonna save the Country Club, he signed up. Great job, great job. There's bigger issues to deal with, but hey, we're off and running. Guess Mike can drink in the cool lake. Okay, so, the other part of it is, we have forty-two, I'm sorry, we have fifty-one existing residents, six non-residents, we actually signed some, somebody up at the park, walked out last week. And I just wanna end it by, I wanna thank the new people who have signed up, welcome to the club, we had a great day yesterday. And one of the things I learned yesterday, of all the people that were there, the best salesmen were the gym teachers, the phys ed teachers, Anthony Taddy, Mike Cibullis, Jake Cibullis, John Adamovich, Sandy Stein, Brian Hocky. I never knew that phys ed teachers were salesmen. Maria Kane, Tony Anastasia, okay? Were there. And we actually had a special guest there yesterday. We had James Franco there yesterday, our own James Franco was there yesterday, absolutely phenomenal. People were thrilled, it was terrific. I wanna thank the Commission members, Andrea Weinstein, Jane Shurnow, Dwight Rowan, and myself, and all the people who've been helping with the work party, okay? Roger, Dave, and by the way, Dave Oliver painted the chairs for you, Eleanor. He painted those white chairs, okay? That's it, all-time record. Thank you, everyone.
The, the, uh, the biggest stakeholder in the Country Club, besides Pam, is the, um, Country Club of Woodbridge Commission, who have an advisory and regulatory role, um, in negotiating with, um, good management. And, um, I think that those are the people who have the biggest, deepest, and actually getting at it on track, Pam and Pam. And I have started a, um, started a petition to that effect, to give them powers of negotiation for the best for golf. You got another student, you can be outside after the meeting, you can. Good evening to all of you volunteers. Hard job, very time-consuming. All of us in the audience applaud you. Some of us who actually do some volunteer work understand really what it means. It's a Country Club referendum tonight in certain ways in terms of the audience, Eleanor. I think that perhaps what you're hearing, and I'm not sure if this would be echoed fully, uh, but when you're hearing about different elements of that particular club, for those of us who have lived here for quite some time, and I've raised a family here, and now my granddaughter is still going through the school shooting lessons on that one eighty-four Anson Road, we recognize that there not being a traditional town center, there have been other areas of activity. In years gone by, it's been the private Country Clubs. And so, it was Oak Lane, which I have privileged of creating precedent of at one point, it was Woodbridge, and the only ones that you have locally now are Ricebrook. And so, when the town made the deal, a few years back, which in hindsight was perhaps a little more expensive than we would've wanted it to be, right? We would think so. Uh, but it did it for a reason, and the reasons, I think, were quite legitimate in terms of looking at the options at the time, and not having control. And I think that all of us in the audience wanna have some measure of control of that property. Some of people just wanted this open space and whatever the definition of open space may be. But I will say this, that at this point, of the utilization of the grounds as recreational activity, this is active recreation, uh, has been enhanced. And I think what has been said is that the First Selectmen's ability to renegotiate was pivotal. Now, there is more opportunity to negotiate. I understand it's very hard, you don't wanna do it in public, but I'll point out the following facts. As I left there this evening, because I'm an active member recreationally of the golf operation, and people that I play with, many of them residents, many of them not residents, but about sixty to seventy of those folks asked me to express to the joint boards the fact that they think it's an amenity that ought to be kept. And of course, they've been there since its inception in two thousand and ten, eleven. So, those are people that are active. When I left there this evening, if you remember, Mr. Taddy put up a volleyball area, okay? And there were probably about twenty people playing in that volleyball area this evening. I'd never seen that kind of activity before, something somewhat unique. In addition to that, you've got tennis in an operation, to the extent that you have that, plus we know that golf has returned from an operational standpoint of profit over the last couple of years. So, I think when you're going through your deliberations as Selectmen, and trying to make some determinations as to where you go next, you really need to look at the operation itself, figure out whether or not that makes sense. And I will tell you from all the perspectives that I've gotten, it's improved, and it tends to continue to make sense. It is open space, it's just active recreational use. The second consideration, which is, I know weighing at everybody's mind, is the cost of the building. And so, some suggestions have been made, and I'll encourage the administration publicly to look at different options for the building. One of the things I saw this evening is if you look at the west-facing roof, people have talked about what you need to do internally, but with all of the incentives we have going on with respect to using the sun and solar power, I'm not sure how much has been investigated as to once you repair that roof, utilizing solar power, because I think it can be done, it can be done very well. The third thing I wanna point out is the young people who are using that club. We have an army of students, and this year, for the first time, they not only have a boys team, but they have a girls team, and they're out there all the time. So, I think you need to look at, and the first speaker was very active, there is generational change going on. We'd all like to be younger and take advantage of it, but I see it through the eyes of my granddaughter, and I see her getting very active in terms of recreational opportunities. So, it may not be yet the mecca that it can be, but it can be a lot more than it is. And I think we have to go and look at all the options, realize that we have got a good start, you've got all these volunteers with Bob and Recreation, et cetera, there's lots of things we've talked about at these other meetings, and so, whether or not it's partially is a senior center, whether it's partially to be used by Boards and Commissions, but I think you've gotta look at it as a gem that can be polished, rather than as something that's deteriorating. Please don't allow that to happen. Thanks very much.
I just want to make a quick, um, comment that the operations of the golf course were
I just want to make a quick comment that the operations of the golf course were the revenue-succeeded expenditures because of the town contribution. I wanted to just make sure that that was clear to the folks.
I think it's really important, since the budget is the core of this meeting, for people to understand, if money were no object, I don't think there's anyone who would disagree that we should keep the beautiful country club, we should refurbish it, we should have a swimming pool. It's our responsibility here to measure all that against the tax burden on all of you. And the reason this is really not a referendum on the country club tonight is because we're not talking about all the costs. That's not within the purview of what we're doing. I can tell you that Billy Casper Golf has told us that there are millions of dollars that improvement, of improvements that need to be made, perhaps not for next year, they would do one more year, they'd consider one year. The pool needs considerable refurbishing. That's not to say it's impossible, but it is to say that the question is, how much are you all willing to pay for it? And that's something that we really have to discuss. Right now, there are 51 Woodbridge pool members and 54 Woodbridge golf members. On the pool side, I mean, Bob, the pool is doing great this year. He thought he could really make it a go and perhaps make it self-sufficient, not for the improvements, but at least for cost. And we're giving that a try. On the golf side, however, Woodbridge residents are a very small minority of who plays there. So Woodbridge residents have to ask themselves, what are we willing to pay for this? And that's what we will be discussing over the next weeks and months.
Anna Jefferson, 425, able to be a teacher, so if you reject the right? I think if the townspeople were willing to spend $6 million or whatever it was for that facilities garage, which none of us can use, I think maybe we could consider putting a couple of million dollars into a country club that all of us can use and enjoy.
Dean Hodgson, I'm actually also the chair of the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission. I just want to amplify on certain information that was just given. There was a presentation by Billy Casper Golf at the April Board of Selectmen meeting where they gave a range of numbers, I believe it was, 2.2 to 4.8 million dollars in capital expenditures required over the next 10 years, okay? Approximately 2.6 to 2.8 million, oh, of the 4.8 was related to the building because it was their recommendation very simply that, you know, again, what they would do is demolish the clubhouse and build another clubhouse. And they would also get rid of the pool and the facilities, you know, things like that. You know, all of which, you know, I would suggest, you know, obviously it's their decision, you know, so that incorporated into that set of numbers is misleading. The second, and so the remainder of what they were talking about, which is an area of 2 to 2.2 million dollars, over half of that was if the irrigation system would have to be replaced, okay? Which isn't it. They're not saying it has to be replaced. I mean, in fact, when the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission did a capital budget, and again, that capital budget has a seven-year window, they said, well, no, we don't have to include it in the seven years. So we didn't include it in the seven years. Okay, so I guess maybe it's in years eight, nine, or 10. But in any event, and then there's about a million dollars of ongoing improvements. Now, some of these things are tree removals, tea expansions, drainage, the insulation of cart paths, there's things that we do every year. There's things that customarily come out of, in essence, an operating budget of a golf course. Unfortunately, within the town's construct, you know, anything that's considered capital kind of goes into a different budget, so that's where we are in that. The other thing, you know, about the number of members and, you know, things like that, I mean, at the pool, you have a right to play, or excuse me, swim in the pool if you're a member. At the golf course, you know, you can show up tomorrow and play if you want. I mean, you don't have to be a member. And so the number of rounds that are played, or the percent of the revenues that are generated by Woodbridge residents is significantly greater than just the membership dues alone. Thank you.
Amy Merall again. I just, here, you, you and town council, you started it up when David Loebber spoke about the petition.
I thought there were no more speakers, and I wanted to get that brief.
Okay, well, if I could, just to amplify so then when you do speak, that the folks would understand it. The petition is a petition that is actually under section 4-5G of the charter. 4-5G says that 150 acres can propose a new ordinance, they can also suggest the repeal of an ordinance. And then there is a process the board of selectmen must follow. The Country Club of Woodbridge Commission is created by ordinance, it was created while Ed Sheedy was first selectman. That ordinance, which is in chapter 75, article 17, actually gives the following duties and powers in relevant part to the commission. It says the commission shall have the following powers. A, to make recommendations to the board of selectmen concerning the hiring of a professional golf management company, consultant, screenskeeper, and such other please as are in its judgment necessary across their operations in the Country Club of Woodbridge. Now, it's my understanding that many people thought that meant that they actually could engage in negotiations. Of course, they would have to come to the board of selectmen with any recommendations. However, it's also my understanding that the country club has been told that, no, we can't engage any discussions and negotiations. So this proposed petition would actually drop the existing ordinance, just because we want to follow very closely the language of the charter, and then propose to enact a new proposed ordinance, same as the existing one, with an extra provision to make clear that they can actually negotiate. But of course, under our charter, they would go to the board of selectmen. So the rationale, as I understand it, from those who want to do this petition, is that while Ellen has negotiated in the past, she has also made some statements that indicate that she is leaning toward housing on the country club. She also has, as we've just heard, has the benefit of some excellent expertise on the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission. And so in order for us as townspeople to be able to fully understand what the apples and oranges are, as a vote is in due course presented to us, it would be helpful if the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission had an opportunity to actually work with Billy Casper or any other entity and see what kind of contract they would propose after December of 2016. Just so we have all the information, what would be the actual cost, et cetera. And I certainly would be interested in what our town council has to say about this petition. And if there are those who are interested in signing it, or if he says we need to amend it in its amended form, please stay tuned. Thank you.
Hi, Mike Hilton, Vine Institute Street, Channel Road. Some of you might know I have a lot to say on this, and I would be the outlier here, but I do not believe we should continue funding the golf operation for a number of reasons. But one thing I wanted to address directly is that I was, I have served on the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission, and know the details very well. When you characterize what Billy Casper said in their presentation a few weeks ago as possible, or, you know, a good way to move forward, I don't know how you can get anything like that out of that. They were very clear in dire circumstances the club is in. There's no two ways about it. What we have bought seven years ago is 150 acres of beautiful property. We need to reframe how we think about this purpose. We don't need to have it as a golf course. We have 150 acres that we're already paying for. We don't need to put in hundreds of thousands of dollars year after year on failed business. It's simply a failed business. That is by in no way a comment on Billy Casper's efforts, their professionalism, or their ability to make it work. Now, there's also been a tremendous amount of misinformation out there. Things like the irrigation system being okay for maybe another 10 years. Billy Casper said just a few weeks ago, first and foremost, their priority is they need $150,000 additionally above their management costs to address the irrigation system, because it's costing them $40,000 a year additional water costs, which is making it impossible for them to let. So, I'll try to keep it short. You know, I understand there's going to be another petition signing outside. All I would ask is that before you sign anything, or make up your mind, that if you haven't already reviewed Tony Genovese's presentation on the finances, it was in his, I'm just looking for the date. It was the joint Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen meeting on September 30th, 2015. He outlined all the cost of the date. It's considerable, and everybody should know that. And I would also encourage you to watch Billy Casper's golf's presentation that just took place a couple of weeks ago, because they clearly outline, and honestly outline, what it's going to take for this town to be successful. And it's not a pretty picture. There are one entity in this game right now that is making money on this, and they're not speaking favorably of it. So just get the facts and then decide for yourselves. Thank you.
So there was an additional item on the agenda, Town Council, Gerald Wyder is going to address that.
Item number three on your agenda is the abandonment of property, except 27 of our roads for a variety of reasons I was going to call before. We're not going forward with that tonight, so that is not on the agenda, other than Amy's comment about the petition. I haven't seen the signed petition yet, I heard about it today. I'll be happy to look at it as soon as you present it to the town clerk, and we can talk about its form and other things that are my responsibility. So as soon as I get it, I'll look at it, go for the charter, figure it out. So that's all I have, and I think that's, and for you.
For the business meeting, Gerald.